Plays on with the Department of Public Works. And he's running the meeting, I think, right?
Trying to.
Okay. And Gwen Finley in the upper right-hand corner. Daria, Risa, and Eva down at the bottom. Okay. And I don't know if Tatiana's coming. I didn't hear from her, but I know she's working and Cheryl is not coming. So I'm going to start the meeting at 5:06. Okay.
I have someone on with an iPad. I'm not sure if that's Tatiana or not.
Oh, maybe.
Could be.
She's in an iPad? Is there a way for her to identify herself?
Um, if it's her, I think I might be able to change her name, but it just says iPad.
You can see her.
I just say iPad. Maybe it's me.
Oh.
Oh, it's Daria iPad. That's.
Oh, yeah, it does. Okay.
She's cutting a new name. We're gonna call her iPad if you call.
D A R I A, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So, um, everybody has turned in your updates on public gardens. Some very, very good, some finding some fault. Uh, I think Gwen found that the, you could tell, we won't go into it in great details, but if you'd like to say a little bit about what you saw at Mary Hill Green, just for the others to know.
Well, Mary Hill Green looks really good. The Ligulara looks really great. I did not deadhead them because Sharon and I spoke, so we figured we'll let them reseed. There are three huge mum plants. I thought Sharon had gone out and planted mums. And I guess that's because they were from last year and they really came back. They're unbelievable and they're blooming. The little, where the yucca is, there are little tiny mum plants coming up. And it looks okay. The library is a different story. But Mary Hill Green, I think once, next year, I'm hoping those perennials that we planted the first year, you know, give them some time next year, maybe they'll look, come up a little more. The grasses look good.
Is it still dry there?
It's still dry, yes.
Okay. So I guess Dan and I are gonna have to go over there and look at it. Okay. Wait a minute. Hold on a second. Dan, Henriette says she's in the meeting room, but she doesn't know how to get in. I don't know. Do you see her?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just let her in.
Okay. Thank you.
I think she's listed as a galaxy.
Oh. We have iPad and Galaxy here today with us. Okay.
I think I can change it.
Okay. And you're on mute, Henriette, so just to let you know, I can't hear you. Okay. So, so, um, Gwen found that the library was not being watered. I did talk to the people there. I'm not sure why they're not doing it. So we're gonna have to reach out to them and say, it doesn't make any sense for us to plant these planters for you if you don't keep them watered.
So what library are we talking about? Wintonbury?
Yes, the Wintonbury Library. Now, in the past, they always watered. And I did call Elizabeth, and I think I spoke to Sarah too, about keeping them watered. So if we put mums in there, I would wanna make sure that they water them. And maybe we can talk to them. I know it's been kind of irregular with COVID about, I don't, has the library even opened? I'm not even sure it's open.
They're in there very limited hours.
Okay.
And they have different staff in there.
There's always someone in there because when I went twice, if you have to call from the, from the parking lot or something, but, yeah.
I'll send an email to Elizabeth and I'll ask her to reinforce with the girls to water.
Okay.
So they're watering the planters in the, in the front?
No.
Just the one planter.
In the back?
Yes, that's all we did this year. Yeah.
Okay.
And I mean, if they give it a really, I know we've had this very dry season. But if they, just, I'm trying to get that.
If they give it a soaking every other day, if it's hot, it should be fine.
Or even a lot of water. And, and maybe we need to do is think about that planter being a little bit more permanent and putting some succulents in there, like sedums, and then adding a few flowers, but making it something more that will be more drought tolerant. That might, and would take the onus off them having to water as much.
That's not a bad idea.
Okay. And I have some more grasses. So I put grasses in the police department planters and they came back. So we could do that also, is put a grass on one part of the planter and then put things around it. So we do have those.
I mean, the lantana looked, you could see where they started to really make a showing and the sweet potato vine, but you could see where it shriveled up because of lack of water.
Okay. Well, we'll work on that. Eva took over the electronic sign. That's doing well, except last year, our Sun Believable's in front of the electronic sign were doing fantastic. But again, it's the drought and there's no water that goes there. So she was gonna water there, or she has been watering there.
I was over there today. I watered it for the, like, the third time and it's already looking a lot better.
Oh, great.
And there's more buds, so it, just with that little water over the past few days, it's doing much better.
Yeah. The water really makes a difference. By the way, I found out the secret from Mira, who owns Bloomfield Farm, how you get all those big plants. He says you have to water, be very consistent about watering around nine o'clock every morning. He doesn't do any fertilizer on those plants. He said, it's just, it's just the technique. This is Bloomfield Farm. All of his, if you look at all his plants, they're, they're just amazing.
They're amazing.
Yeah. They're huge. I mean, he has castor beans that are 10 feet tall and eight feet across. And I said, what fertilizer are you using? And he said, none. He just, he's very consistent, he said, about watering at nine o'clock every day. If you order too soon in the morning, the plants aren't, they aren't active. You know, they're not like, they're still sleeping. And then if you water them at night, they're going into a down kind of, they're going to sleep, so they're not really actively doing anything. And so if you water them then, when they wake up in the morning, they sort of dry out. So he had this whole philosophy about it. So I said, well, it's worth, you know, thinking about. So I'm recommending you try it in your own gardens and see if it works.
Actually, I'm gonna try that.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, really. And the other gardens, let's see. The town hall is looking great. Kudos to Eva for the hanging baskets at town hall. They are awesome. They really are beautiful. And you know, she goes there twice a week, right, Eva? Yes. She's shaking her head.
Yes, I do.
Yeah. And it really makes a difference this year. And we, we're, Dan gave us permission. We ordered pots for those area, those eight planters, and we're gonna try to save those planters, put them in my greenhouse and see if we can winter them over. And so we get a bit, you know, an earlier start in the spring. And then the eight baskets we ordered, we're going to put greens and the winter berries in. So just, just to let you know. And the other gardens are, let's see. The 330 Park is doing okay. The backside, they take care of it a lot better than the front. Again, it's an issue of who's going to water. And they don't have a lot of things going on in 330 Park, so they haven't been watering on the weekends. So I've been going and watering. Usually you get a little rain by now, so you don't have to do it. But it's a shame to let the things, you know, the plants die back because people do come there and it's a nice greeting to them when they walk into these, these areas. And Risa went and took care of the 330 Park electronic sign. And that's pretty bare. We gotta work on that. We're gonna put mums in it for the fall, but it's, it's, how many of the hostas are still there?
They're there, but they are clearly struggling. The ones on the backside where there's more shade are in better shape, but I'm sure they'll come back okay.
I think they'll be better for next year, for sure. And we'll get mulch on it because I don't think, Dan, did you ever mulch there? Where is he?
No, there's no mulch. There's no mulch.
Yeah. So.
Yeah. I don't remember. I thought we did mulch that. I know we turned it over. Have you ever put mulch on top?
No, I don't think so. So.
We can get it on next year.
Yeah. Or even if we put some in the fall or something so that it's ready to go in the spring. Because we're gonna, we're going to plant bulbs there. We have bulbs there, but maybe we'll plant some alliums there too. So we know we'll be covered for the spring. It's just how the rest of the season will look. And the police department is doing fine. Those planters do not get watered enough. And we have to figure out how we can do something there because three years in a row, I know Dan's really tried, but for some reason, come the mid-season, when it gets really hot, they just don't get enough water. And so they look pretty straggly right now. So we're gonna put mums in there and some succulents and see if that can change it. Rest of the beds look good. I think that's all the, the town green, Henriette said, looks good. There's a few places where there's, you know, things are starting to die back. But all of the perennials you planted this year, right, Henriette, are doing well? Yes? Okay.
You know what else looks really good, Sharon? Unfortunately, you know, it wasn't open this year, was the pool.
Yeah.
There the other day and, you know, a lot of the perennials in there are really coming in and the grasses and, you know, it's too bad that it just didn't get open because of COVID this year, but that's really taken hold, I think.
Yeah. It really has. The daylilies are doing well. I would like you to put on your schedule, Dan, if possible, to get the grasses edged. And even if we edge them in the fall so that we could keep the, because all the grasses, the lawn grass is starting to grow in because we didn't, we weren't able to get the edging done.
Yeah.
We could do that, do you think, for next year? Would that be possible? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. I've been, we're, we're, we're pretty much wrapped up with our roadwork. So quite honestly, the, we're catching up on a lot of cleaning out outfalls because things are so dry right now.
Yeah. Okay. That sounds good. Because I know, I felt badly like, because nobody was there, the inside of the pool where the yellow zebra grasses are coming up, a lot of, you know, grassy weeds are starting to invade. And it's probably good if we have time and maybe some of the committee, we can all go over there and take, you know, a half an hour, all of us, and pull some of that out. And come spring, we won't have to worry about it as much. It'll be all set to go. Do you mulch those areas, Dan, in the spring? What's been the policy for that?
Which areas are we talking about?
The swimming pool inside where we planted the grasses, inside the pool on the.
On the building we did. We typically don't mulch, like, on the backside of the fence. But we do along the building. And we can, we can try and get it mulched next year, as long as I know about it, you know?
Okay. All right. Well, we can, when we go over there, we can look and see. Okay. So I think that's all the gardens.
And. I think, I think Daria was gonna talk about a lot of the pruning that she did over at town hall and the library.
Okay. Daria, where's iPad? Where is she? There she is.
I, I pruned the, I finished pruning the winter berry, winter berries and they look very good. I, then I pruned that small weeping cherry right in the front that you wanted me to do. And that was, uh, yeah, I've actually never done a weeping cherry, so I, but I think I did a pretty good job. And, and then I noticed that the, the trees that are next to Walmart, the two of them, two or three of them, they're different. One, two of them look really good. And I think, I'm pretty sure those are winter king hawthorns and then some other ones. But anyway, I was, I was gonna maybe do a little bit of pruning there. And then, um, I think, oh, oh, and then I did do the cedar, the, the, the big cedar that we talked about, Sharon.
Oh, you did? Oh, good. Okay.
Dan and his, his men probably took, because I left all the branches there. And then I noticed that they're gone. And I was gonna do a little bit more over there because we noticed that there was that magnolia over there. I was gonna limit up. But, um, I guess that's, I'm trying to think. I guess that's about it.
Well, I know that, yeah, Dan, she pruned the plums, says you walk, as you drive into the backside of the town hall, which really looked good. And she also pruned, if you might please tell your men this year, she pruned the two winter berries on either side of the steps to town hall.
Okay.
So that this year, they don't need to go in and, and chop them to put the lights on. They can just put the lights on, correct?
Yeah.
Right? Yeah. So if they wouldn't, ask them please not to prune them because we're, she's trying to put them into some shape. So I think that would be good. And by the way, those trees that are on the side, Dan planted them last fall, they're Naisis salvatica, known as tupulos, black tupulos.
Okay. Yeah. The, the.
Those are natives. Yeah.
The tupulos are not doing that well, but the other, there's three of those, I think, and then there's two, and those are doing really well. And with the drought. And I'm pretty sure those are Hawthorne, winter king hawthorns.
Is that what they are, Dan?
Species, I can't, I can't tell you, Sharon. My memory's not that good.
Okay.
We also, we also planted a tree alongside Park Avenue. We took two trees out on August 3rd, the day before the storm. There were dead maples at town hall.
Yeah.
One of them, we dug the stumps out. One of them we replaced along Park Avenue. The other tree was really kind of mixed in with another one and it just didn't warrant another tree. So those trees were, um, what the heck did we put over there? We had one in our yard. Oh, Christ, I got, it escaped me now what we put there.
That would be good for us to know because that's one of the things we wanted to talk about was the town hall arboretum. So maybe you can think of it before we get to item three on news. Okay. That, and, and also, well, we'll talk about, Daria, about how we looked at that area when we get to that. Okay. Thank you very much, Daria, for doing that pruning. Did you do the Stewardias at town, at the fire, police department yet?
Yes. Yes. I did those probably, it's, it's been a while, probably like a month ago.
Oh, okay. So you did the Stewardias too?
I did those. And I did the dogwoods. I actually have one more. I did, there's three dogwoods at the library and I only did the two. And I have to finish the set, the third one. And I think that's.
Okay.
And I was, this isn't, well, we could talk about it later because I went to the cemetery, the winter.
Yeah. We got that, that's coming up. So don't talk about that yet. Wait, wait, don't do that yet. Okay. Okay. Do you have anything else to say with your report other than that?
No, I don't think so. No.
Okay. All right. We'll, we'll bring it up. So, uh, we're gonna go move on to the Instagram account and where we are and what's happening. And Eva's gonna talk about that.
All right. We're slowly billing, building up some followers. We're up to 32 followers now.
Oh, yay.
And I recently sent out an email to some of my friends that are, that I know from the Friends of the Library, asking them to consider following us on Facebook. And I think, we'll get to this later when we talk about notable landscapes. But there was an article this weekend, in this week's version, in this week's Town Messenger, about the Notable Landscape Awards. And in that article, we mentioned at the end that we're gonna be posting some of the winners and their gardens on Instagram. So, and we had our, we put our Instagram account name in the article. So hopefully, when people read that, they'll be curious and go on to our Instagram page. Our likes continue from all around the world. And I think it's because of the hashtags we're using, because it looks like people search for specific things they're interested, either cosmos, ligularia, sedum, whatever it is. So since last month, we've gotten likes from a couple of people in the UK, someone from Japan, someone from Germany, someone from Sweden, Estonia, and then some mixed media artists that specializes in floral types of art. So, so we're getting a lot of interesting people that are looking at our photos. We've had seven posts since our last meeting. The most recent, I posted some stuff about the Autumn Joy Sedum that we have both at town hall, not a town hall, but at the police station and at Prosser Library. We did highlight the ligularia at Mary Hill, like, earlier in the month. Because as, as Gwen was saying, those look fabulous. I did a brief shout out, a thank you for the bird bath. So there's a picture of the bird bath gift from Heirloom Flats. And I recently also posted some stuff about that garlic chive, Sharon, that we have at the police station. And so, you know, we're printing good, we're posting a good variety of different things that are going on in town.
Good. Good. I might suggest that you send a note. I could give you the person to contact at Heirloom Flats and mention to them how delighted we are with the bird bath and that maybe their people, they, they do put announcements and they have a electronic board that people can go and see, you know, what's happening with their donation and, and how it's doing and they might.
I use the Heirloom Flats, Heirloom Flats, Bloomfield, Connecticut hashtags. So perhaps the people.
Oh, okay.
That are living there, that use Instagram might look, it might, so we'll see if we have any response from that. But yeah, give me the first person's name.
Okay. I will. All right. That's great. I think it's exciting to see that, and you could put a lot more hashtags in, but I like the way it's growing and it allows us, when we posted in the, when we wrote in the newspaper, we said that we had not only had the Instagram account, but that they could see the winners on the town website. So we're pushing those two things and hopefully we get more people, you know, interested in it. The, what we're moving on to now is the Notable Landscape Awards. And very, so, let's see. We have somewhere between 40, I think we have 43 or 44 winners. It varies on which day we go out. And I'm gonna tell a little bit about it, but I would like Eva to tell a little bit about it because it's phenomenal, going out and going door to door. I've got people calling me, asking me, can I have my award from last year? Because you didn't give it to me. And people, we, we went around and within 15 minutes, some people had already put their picture of themselves up on Facebook with their sign. And so I think it's beginning to generate, it's just like the Instagram account, you know, build it and they will come. It's, it's, I don't think this has really been highly touted for a long time. So we're trying to make it exciting and make people want to be involved. And the gardens you go to, you just can't believe what we've seen. Eva and I have been going to different houses. We started on, what day was it? Let's see. Can't remember anymore.
Started on Saturday.
Saturday. And we did two days there and we're still, we still got like half to go. And it's just, oh, Eva, tell them some of the experiences of what we had going to do this.
No. Well, we met the most, you know, fascinating, interesting people across town. And what I was struck with is just how diverse, different people's gardens were. Some people were more into kind of a lot of flowers and a lot of different varieties. Some people were a lot more kind of simplistic, I don't wanna say simplistic, but just very, what's the word? Edited kinds of landscapes. And pretty much everybody we actually found that was at home and talked to us, they all wanted to talk more and more about their gardens. And everybody was thrilled to have received the award. And we're very proud of their gardens. And a lot of them are incented to do even better next year because they won this year. They think they have to really keep up with things. But, you know, it was just wonderful to see what variety there was out there and just see how really enthusiastic people were about getting the awards. And particularly in some neighborhoods where there's like competition between some of the neighbors and their, you know, it, it's, it's all, you know, with their gardens turning out so good, they are motivating other people in their neighborhood to start, albeit small, but people are really appreciating, particularly in these times of COVID where a lot of people are walking, they're getting to see more and more of what's out there.
Yes. Thank you, Eva. We, we had like 36, 37 residences and five businesses. And like she said, everyone has been excited about it. And a couple of places, we got the names wrong. And we discovered that one person who won, when we, when Eva, who, if she hadn't been working with us, she probably would be a police detective, has been able to find stuff and Risa found names. And it was like, we found JMo is one of the winners, his, his house. And there was the owner of Fitzgerald's lives in Bloomfield. And one place we went to, they collect birds. They had like over 35 tropical birds that they raise and then find homes for. They have names on the cages and everything and beautiful landscape. And then there were other gardens where one guy took us into his house because he had to show us his atrium in the middle of his house with a 10-foot banana tree and very, I think it was like 10 feet wide too. You know, it's, you just, and they started plants outside by seed. And people have really, I think with COVID, taken the time out to go into their gardens. And many people that I interviewed said they do it because it gives them peace of mind. It's a form of meditation. Many people, I said, what do, what do you like about your garden? She says, I love my flowers. I said, well, what flower do you like the best? She says, no, no, no. I like all my flowers. And so, and everybody has a story. And maybe next year, some of you can go out to and go door to door because it's quite, it really connects you to your community. And we, we will be announcing the winners at the town council meeting, which is coming up on Monday, the 28th. But it is a Zoom meeting. So we've been taking pictures, Eva and I, and we're trying to figure out to do some sort of collage that we can kind of put up on the screen and just announce the people because they all wanted to come. And I said, there's no meeting. You can't come like in the past. So this is second best. I wanna show you what we came up with. You know, we decided not to do the frames this year. So last year, Henriette and Risa put these frames together. And as they said, it took a lot of work to, oh, here, excuse me, backwards, you know, to take the glass out, undo these little, can you see this? So undo these little springs. And so it was a lot of work. So here's what we came up with this year. And I think it worked out pretty well. So these were the black folders, okay? And we had the mayor sign them and we had the gold seals put on them. And this is the way they look.
That came out nice. Cause I saw one on Facebook.
Yeah. Oh, oh, we did have an interesting thing. We went to this woman on Brent, uh, let's see, Brentwood. And she was talking about her garden. First of all, we have to redo her certificate because we didn't give her credit. We gave her husband credit and you do not do that. You have to give the gardener's credit. Her name is Hope. And Hope was telling about it and she says, oh, my sister won too. And Eva says, well, who's your sister? Well, her sister is Hazel Redway, who lives on Cliffmont, right, Eva? And we haven't been able to get ahold of Hazel. So she promised us that, I don't know if she's called you or not. She didn't call me. But.
I'll call Hope again to get her.
Okay. Yeah. And then Hope proceeded, she has apples growing on her tree in front that she's very[1689.40] Okay, yeah. And then Hope proceeded, she has apples growing on her tree in front that she's very proud of and she gave us seeds from her Datura. And she gave me this humongous, I'm not even sure what it is. She called it a squash, but, or a pumpkin, but some kind of odd thing. And it's on my doorstep for my pumpkin this year. And it's so, you know, people are just so proud of what they're doing and, and there's connections everywhere with the people who win. So. So anyway, this was really good and I would highly recommend that we do this again next year this way, much easier to deal with. And more cost effective. So that's that.
Dan, excuse me, do you need help putting those together or are they done?
No, they're all done, except for the ones I have to do over. One thing I learned from this year is before I do any of them and print them up, somebody has to edit. Eva edited this year. Risa was good about finding telephone numbers for me. And that, those two things, I think we have to start a little earlier to get that done. Because that's really important, the telephone numbers so we can correspond with people. And like, I'm really glad that Eva pointed out, it's, you know, where a street, it's a street, not a road or it's an avenue, not an avenue, you know. Getting the correct names on the thing. So even though I have to do them over again, it's, I think it looks better for us to be doing them right.
Sharon, have you, have you given all the awards out? Cause I was, it wasn't someone's establishment. They told me they won, but they didn't get anything yet.
No, we haven't, that must have been Isaac's, no. And Isaac didn't respond. He never even responded to his letter, which I'm gonna give him grief for, say. You didn't even let me know that you, you know, he, he sort of, he's really funny about that. So. No, we have that on our schedule to go on Wednesday. Or I have another fundraiser that I'm working on, so kind of two hats, it's hard to do both at the same time.
Well, he's putting new plants up too, his hanging baskets now.
Well, I heard, actually those plants, this is what happens when you live in a small community, those plants came from Mira, which is Bloom Hill Farm. So we found out that, that he did that and, but it was nice. They were glad that they shared with each other. So yes, we will be going to him up this week.
It's taken a lot longer just because everyone's just so excited and wants us, wants to show us everything and talk about their different plants and. So it's just, you think it'd be like a five-minute visit, a lot of them turn out to be twenty-minute visits, half hour visits. So it's taken a lot longer.
Well, that's a good thing because I think now the competition will start, you know, it'll start building the momentum.
I hope so. Yeah, I'm gonna encourage people now when we go, if you have a Facebook page, show your friends that you want. Barbara Steele who lives at two sixty-one Dunkaster, I saw she posted a picture of her, her sign with her standing in her garden and.
So did Angelique.
Angelique did it too. We weren't even out of the driveway and five minutes later, we saw her, she'd already posted. So, yeah, that's what we want.
Angelique is in competition with her sister Ann Shelley.
They're funny. I said, take my name off of this, you're getting me in trouble.
I know.
Is there anything else, anybody else wants to know about the notable landscapes? I think we're all set with that. Okay, I'm gonna move on to the.
Well, I have a question, I'm sorry. Did everyone find that it worked well the way we did it this year? Everyone took a certain section?
I thought it went well.
I really liked it and I'll tell you why. From the community, we got maybe eight nominations. But between all of you, I mean, some people sent me twenty names, some people sent me one name of the committee. But it was all very helpful. And in that you got a section and you went on every street, I think you get to see your community a different way. And there are little pockets of gardens that you would never see if we just go down the main streets. And next year, what we should do is you don't get the same quadrant again, you go to a different quadrant. And Risa and David helped me set that up and I thought that worked really well. So now that we've done it once.
I found streets I didn't even know existed.
I know, right? Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. And even I have to tell you the businesses too. So one business, one out across from Command. Another business was on Douglas Street. It's a tennis club and I don't even know if you know, but this tennis club's been there for years and it actually turns out that he won it several years ago too. So it's, it's, they kind of like it if that, you know, that they've won or they haven't won, but businesses, I do think appreciate being recognized also. And I heard once that we have over a thousand businesses in our community. So we have to, I think, spend a little more time looking to see what some of the businesses are doing so that they get recognition. Okay, well, I'm gonna move on to the Pollinator Pathway update. I don't know, it may not be big, but Eva, again, if you wanna tell everyone about that.
Okay, I'm gonna mute myself. Okay. I did touch base with Nancy Grandin and she's in the process of making me, both me and Sharon, an editor. Of their Facebook page. So the Facebook page they have up and running. And from what I, and the name of the account on Facebook, if anyone else wants to take a look at it, is New England Pollinator Pathway. And it seems from what they've posted so far, is mostly kind of third-party stories, either from the Smithsonian or other places, but. I saw lately that they have been posting a couple of, a few things from what they've been doing in Simsbury. And she said that once she has us set up as editors, she's gonna talk to us about more specifically in terms of what kind of content she's looking for. And how often she wants us to post. In terms of their website, they're still working on the website. The Facebook page is up, but not the website yet. And they've been busy just setting them, getting kind of their status as a tax-exempt organization set up. So I think that's kind of held, you know, it's delayed them in terms of getting their website up because they're working on, working with the IRS in terms of getting their tax-exempt status. Getting their bylaws written and they're working on trying to recruit people to be officers. On, you know, for that, for that organization. So I think that's been taking up a lot of their time, but hopefully by our next meeting. Well, I'll have spoken to her and try to get some content about Bloomfield onto the Facebook page. That's it.
Well, thank you, thank you. I think that's gonna be kind of exciting. We could probably even use our Messenger article. Put in there. And, and we have, when you talk about pollinators, Dan reminded me. And I don't know, maybe Dan would like to say a little bit about it. Our pollinators attracted over a hundred thousand bees to Town Hall. And Dan, would you like to tell them a little bit about the bees?
We discovered back at the end of July that we had a honeybee colony. Living inside the wood trim over the northeast door of the Town Hall. And I sent, I just sent Sharon a video that I took. So we hired a, an individual to come in. Who had to remove all of the wood trim and then he harvested the bees and he relocated them. But when, once we got in there, he realized that we had a colony over one hundred thousand honeybees. Which was living at Town Hall and they, they really weren't bothering anybody. But people kind of were starting to panic when they see the activity of the bees flying in and out of the hive. But you know, it's, it's just a, it's just an example of, of, you know, potentially. They might have found that a nice suitable place to be because, you know, you guys have focused on making, you know, pollinator pathways. You know, it costs us a few bucks to relocate them, but we all know that the bee, the bee colonies are, you know, in a little bit of trouble. So.
Yeah, and they have like a two-mile radius. So if they're at Town Hall, they're in the perfect spot to then like go out and get their nectar and pollen. So. Yeah, I think that's a reflection of all the different pollinators in town.
And I think since the town needs money, we could probably harvest that honey and sell Bloomfield honey.
Well, next time, we're gonna, we're gonna harvest the honey, I'll tell you. And if you do ever get up to Latimer Cemetery, we have a very healthy. Honeybee hive up there too, inside a hollow cedar tree. And that's been there for a good four or five years. Not bothering anybody. And, and, but it's, it's a very active bee colony there. And if you could ever get in there and harvest some of the honey, I think you'd, you'd have a real windfall.
Where is Latimer Cemetery?
It's on Latimer Lane, which is off of.
Farm Hill.
Off of Winton Berry.
Yeah, Daria is gonna talk about it in a few minutes. Okay. She's gonna talk about that. Yeah, I also, it was after the fact, but I realized we do have beekeepers in town. David Hager, I don't know the name of the other gentleman, but I did ask him about it. And next time, if we do have this, some of those beekeepers are interested in those bees too.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, they would take them. And yeah, it was fascinating to see the pictures that Dan was taking. The man was dressed in an all-white suit, you know, with the white. Mask over his face and the netting and everything. And it took him quite a long time, right Dan? Like.
Two days.
Two days.
So he was very conscientious, I gotta admit. He came in, he removed the trim, the wood trim the first day and he uses a shop vac. And he vacuum, vacuums up the bees. He puts them, transfers them into garbage pails. And then he came back very early the next morning to pick up all of the stragglers who came back to obviously find no hive left. So they all congregate there early in the morning, especially when it's cooler. So he came back at like five-thirty in the morning, I met him there and he actually vacuumed up the remaining. Honeybees that had, you know, were out doing their business during the day. So he said, you know, honestly, there was very low mortality rate for, percentage-wise for the hive. He said the honeybees that were kind of displaced, he said some of them might latch on to another hive and others they would lose. But he said, actually. He feels that he's, he got probably over ninety-five percent of the bees from that hive.
So tell me, what, does he think that they'll come back again and create another colony?
No, not necessarily. He doesn't, he doesn't really think that there's any real attraction for them to come back and start another colony there. You know, he got the queen and what he does is he kind of assesses the health of the hive. And then he brings it back and to his place and he makes a decision. He says sometimes he might migrate that with another colony of bees or he might establish, and then, you know. If they're strong enough and he, he would establish them as an independent colony on his property. And then he really, you know, he relocates them as well.
Okay, well, I just hope and I, all of you who are here, take note and see whether we still have bees on our plants. I mean, I would hope that we didn't chase all the bees away. I know we saw a couple of them right after that. They looked like stragglers, but.
And that healthy, and that healthy colony on Latimer Lane is only, it's probably less than a mile from Town Hall.
So it could come to these gardens and go back again too.
I would think so. And that's a very big colony.
Okay, well, that's good.
I was at Town Hall today and there were bees and when I was at the police station yesterday, I got bit by one as I was hitting some of the zinnias. So they're around. And I was at Electronic Science Day too and they were all over the zinnias.
Okay, yeah, winter's coming, harvesting the pollen. Well, that's good to hear. I just found that very fascinating and. Dan, it really would be interesting to put an article, I don't know if you'd want it in the Messenger or not, but I think that's fascinating and, and it's. Really appreciate your wanting to, you know, save the bees rather than react and say, you know, kill them all. I think that was very positive. Okay, let's move on. C E E C, which is the Committee on Energy, Environment and Conservation in Town. Is starting a committee to, to study the trees in Bloomfield and create a. Sort of a tree policy and maybe more planting of more trees. However, Paula, who's starting this, she's Paula Jones. She is not available, so I thought if it's okay and you're interested, we'd schedule her for the October meeting. And she could come in and talk to us about it. What they're trying to do is have different groups be involved in it, so we're all supporting it and. Coming up with some sort of policy for our town on trees, you know, if a tree is cut down, do we have a policy that you have to put a tree back up? Or, you know, in the same place or somewhere else in town, as long as if we're removing trees and. Dan will tell you that a lot of the ash trees are dying in Bloomfield and they are many, many being moved. And I was speaking to someone, a tree person today, and he was telling me the same thing, you know, a lot of trees, a lot of ash trees coming down. So that, we'll schedule that for next week. So that, or excuse me, next month. So the next thing on our agenda is the cemeteries. We have two cemeteries in town. And Daria will tell you where each one is and what her plan was after we, after she and I went out with Dan. One early morning or late morning.
Yes, well, the one in town right across from Philly Pond is called the Old Winton Berry Cemetery and it is, if you've never been there, do yourself a favor. There's so many old graves, really old. Definitely when you go right in to the left, it's a little bit older and then as you go over to the right, it's, it's not as old. But anyway, it's all old and it's, I was, I was just there the other day and I was cutting some of that, that cedar line. I was doing some pruning. And surprisingly, the, those trees look really good for being so old. They have a little bit of dead on them and I'm, I'm getting to all the dead, but. I don't really even have to cut anything else but the dead. And then all the other trees are pretty good too. And I was just going to keep with the upkeep, you know, like. I, I brought my weed whacker and I, I see that Dan or some of his men must have mowed, which was great. And so there wasn't really much for me to do with the weed whacker, but I'd really like to concentrate, since I am all about the trees, on the tree line in the back. There's a lot of, I don't really even know what it is. It's a horrible-looking, you know, thing that wants to climb up there. It's got terrible. Wants to climb on all the trees. It's got, Sharon, when we were there, it doesn't look terrible, but it's, and I'm not gonna cut all of it, but definitely the stuff that's trying to get onto the trees.
It's straggling, yeah.
Yeah, it has very bad thorns. So, but I, I do wanna pull it all off and like at least cut it away from the trees because then I don't want it to get up into the trees. But I think that's about it. I, I wanted to ask Dan because I, I brought one of my collapsible like barrels and I was putting stuff in it, but then I was, I was cutting off way too much. So I piled up some of it. So I don't know what the protocol is, if I go there and there's just stuff to pick up. Would I call you or email you and then maybe?
Just email me and tell me that you left piles in where, approximately where they are and we'll, we'll get over there and pick them up.
Okay, good, good. Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay.
And could I ask you one question, Daria? Do you or Dan know how old those cedar trees are? But there are varieties, I think. There's an ally of them, yes.
No, they're, they're definitely cedars. I was cutting them, they smell.
Oh, okay.
They're not herbivorous. Same thing with the one at Town Hall, that's a cedar too.
It's a cedar.
I don't know how old they are. I honestly have no idea.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't know either. I, maybe, like you said, maybe if we could find some like old pictures or something from the. Winton Berry Historical Society and maybe kind of date them that way. Or what it looked like before.
Or even go online to the state of Connecticut, the magic website for Yukon and you can look at aerial photographs from, goes back to thirty, the thirties. They had the thirties, the fifties, the sixties and you might be able to, to identify how long they've been there.
Yeah.
What is that website? What is that called, Dan?
It's, if you do like a search for the magic, Yukon magic website, they have links to aerial photographs. I think it's all interconnected with the Connecticut State Library. But they have other mapping, GIS maps. It's, it's just a whole, just a whole category of, of information that you can get online.
Okay, that sounds great.
You know, the cemeteries are not owned by the town, but they've kind of fallen into disrepair and. The cemetery associations, I think have, either the, the people who were in charge have passed away or whatever. So we're kind of in a gray area with respect to maintenance. I mean, we kind of, at Public Works, we went out. Four or five years ago and we identified the graves that we could that were veterans and, you know, we kind of adopted them and put American flags out there for Memorial Day. So. As much as it's not technically a town responsibility, it's just out of respect for the heritage and, and, and the, you know, the dead from the town, from the, you know. If no one's gonna maintain these places, there's gotta be some basic level of maintenance. So. It's, it's, I feel it's important for the, for the town and I do appreciate the, the committee taking some time to. Include these, these facilities as, you know, maybe deserving of some attention anyway.
Well, it's interesting. I've lived here almost fifty years. I had no idea about Latimer Lane and I lived on Crestview Drive for ten years and that's right in the neighborhood. And when you go to this place, it's in a neighborhood at the end of the cul-de-sac and you just, there's no markers, there's nothing.
Yeah, you'd never expect a cemetery to be there.
Yeah, that's what makes it good. It's like private. It's like a private place.
Yeah, and it's up a hill, so you walk through and, oh, Dan, were we gonna talk to the homeowners about not dumping along the side of the entry to that or?
Yeah, we can try and we can send them a letter, just like acknowledge the fact. We did, we did take care of that down pine tree that we discovered that day we were there. We cleaned all that up and. We kind of cleaned up some limbs and some trash along the driveway.
Oh, thank you.
But you can understand, when you, when you go up to Latimer Lane Cemetery and if anybody, if. But you can understand when you, when you go up to Latimer Lane Cemetery and if anybody, if, if, if you have any appreciation for old cemeteries, you can completely understand. Why they established it as a cemetery so long ago when they did, because it's kind of an unusual landform. It's this big. Knob like hill in the middle of an area that's not all that hilly. So it, you know, back when it was all farms and fields, that was probably a very logical place to respectfully place people who had passed away. And then, of course, it's all been built up with subdivisions and homes all around it, but it still exists that its own, as its own little, you know, niche. Up there.
So is that cemetery, you know, there's a cemetery, I've never been to it either, on the top of Mountain Avenue? Another one on top of a hill. Is that an old cemetery or is that a newer one?
It's both.
It's both.
Oh, it's both.
It has an active association and I do believe, you know, that obviously maintains it and I do believe that they're still performing burials up there.
Yeah, they are. But you know, it wasn't always a cemetery. I heard that there used to be a school there. It was called like Windy Hill or something school back in the day. So, yeah, and that is definitely more recent, that cemetery.
Okay. Well, Dan, is this something too that we are taking care of, but we're not making a big deal of it, right? We're not advertising it or anything?
We've never advertised it. I'm not interested in assuming. The responsibility of the cemetery because when you do. You're responsible by statute for a lot of things like burials, maintenance of records and. I honestly don't know where all this stuff is. I mean, somewhere, some, somebody has this information. Wittenberry, we still get a card at Christmas from a woman. Who is the daughter of like the last president of the Latimer Lane Cemetery Association.
Yeah.
What information she has. Um, I don't know. And she just acknowledges us for doing the little that we do. The Wittenberry Cemetery down on Tungstus Avenue. I have no idea who, who were the last. Active individuals with the cemetery association at all, or if any of them even exist anymore. I mean, it would be something that probably should maybe go to the historical society and see if you could track it down.
Well, it was interesting that when we went to the Wittenberry Cemetery, there were some flowers, like plastic flowers, I think, or little, little objects placed at the children's graves.
Yeah.
Yeah, somebody goes there and while I was there, I don't know what he was doing, but while I was pruning, some guy just walked through the cemetery. So it gets, you know, there are people that go in there. I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay, well, it does have a nice wrought iron fence and it has some nice details. So it's worth, you know, if you guys are going to. Philly Park or you're walking from town to Geisler's, right? And you want to just check it out because there's really no parking there. You would have to park across at Philly Park to go, go to it.
But when you walk through, it's interesting how many of the names are associated with. Things that are Bloomfield, you know?
Right, yes. You can see the family names are still there and, and many of the graves. Well, some of them are kind of deteriorating because they're brownstone, but many of them have wonderful carvings on them. You know, the kind you used to take paper and rub it if you ever did that when you were a kid, rub the grave to get the images. It's a, if you have grandchildren or something, that's a nice experience to take them to a graveyard and show them how cemetery stones were made. I, there was a lecture at the library I went to, I can't remember all of it, but all those images on the stones, they have meanings. And it's worth looking up and, you know, telling those stories to younger people so they can carry on those traditions since we don't know who's. If there's anybody left to do that. Uh, okay, so that's the cemeteries. Thank you very much, Daria.
I'll be interested, and I, I think I will pursue looking maybe up and going to the. Wittenberry Historical Society. And then, like I mentioned, at Latimer Hill, the woman across the street, her name is Linda Leslie. She, um. She has a little bit of info about the daughter of the last president. I think her name is Elizabeth Woodford was the woman and I looked her up and I think she's at Duncaster. I don't know if she's still alive. But the daughter, she said, who I think lives in New York. She, because once I was there, she's like, are you the daughter? She was asking me and I'm like, no, what are you talking about? So then she told me that sometimes a woman, you know, will come and show interest in that. She thought I was the daughter. So.
Yeah, the Woodfords have farms. They are the ones who owned the picking patch. It's an old family in the area. You might contact them too. But here's a name for you. This is the president of the Wittenberry Historical Society. It's Bill Westenberg. D W E I S S E N B E R G. And his phone number is eight six zero eight four zero one four four eight.
Four eight, okay.
Sharon, do you think Diana Barnett, I think she's, doesn't she keep all of the, she, all the archives?
I think so, yeah. I don't know her. Do you, yeah?
I know her, yeah, I know her and her husband really well. And I think, I know Diana is, she's, she does all of the archiving of all the data and stuff, so. Let me, Eva, I'm sorry, Daria, what I'll probably do is get her phone number and, you know, ask her for permission so you could talk to her.
That's a good idea because, yeah, so she's.
They're in town. They grew up, I mean, he's, he's in his seventies and he was brought up in this town. So he may be able to share some information. And he lives off Wittenberry. He lives up on, what is that, Barn, what's that street? Off Wittenberry Avenue. I forgot the name of the street he lives on.
One way the old house is, it overlooks the.
No, he's up, up, up on one of those side streets. I can't, Barn Hill, something Hill Drive or something. Can't think of the name of the street. Let me speak, I'll speak to Diana and Doug. Because they're, you know, they may know someone and Diana keeps all that information.
And just for the committee's information, the state of Connecticut. Uh, every, every once in a while offers neglected cemetery grants. And we've applied for this, that grant again this year. We've gotten them in the past. Um, it's not a lot of money. It's usually two thousand dollars, fifteen hundred dollars at a time. So, you know, if, if we do get the grant, I think the last time we got the grant, we used it to paint the wrought iron fence at Wintonberry. Um, but maybe we could use it for some enhanced tree trimming or, you know.
Dan, you did mention when we went that you had gotten a grant, but did you use all that money for cutting down the tree?
Yeah, the last grant we've used, we've utilized all that money.
Okay, okay.
We're applying for another one and with a little bit of luck, we'll get a couple thousand dollars and. You know, the only thing is, the thing that's really in need of, of help up there is the grave, the gravestones are breaking and deteriorating. But unfortunately, to repair those or to try and patch them, it's very expensive and these, these neglected cemetery grants are not gonna. Are not going to give us money to really do that, unfortunately.
Well, our cemetery too, up at Old St. Andrews, we've got moles and the headstones are going, you know, because that's an old cemetery also.
Hmm.
You know, and the headstones are starting to sink and it's expensive to maintain.
Yeah, that's a beautiful old cemetery. So it'd be a shame for these cemeteries to, you know, totally fall into disrepair, but I don't even know. Is that a profession? I mean, you know, does someone do that still?
Maybe even to go in and, and I would look, there is a website that I, I'll give you the link, Sharon, I got to look for it. That talks about cemetery preservation and, you know, maybe, maybe a worthwhile. Use of that grant, if we get one, would be maybe to go in and power wash some of the gravestones.
Hmm.
You know, get the mold off of them.
Sure.
That would be good.
Yeah.
As long as it's recommended by them, you know what I mean?
Yeah, they, because you don't want, if they're brownstone, the power sprayer may.
Yeah, you don't want to damage the gravestones any more than they are now.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's good. That's very encouraging. Hey, we've taken a step forward in that and thank you, Daria, for doing that pruning. And Daria mentioned that she went and, I'm going to go to this, is the next topic, is the town hall arboretum. So Daria and I and, and Dan were walking and looking at trees and stuff there. And after he left, Daria and I continued to look around. And there are really some beautiful trees on our town green. Now, this, I mean, this is the town hall green, not the town green. At the corner across from the library. And the thought was that why not, let's put some little brass. Uh, plaques up on the trees and identify them so people can come through and if we, you know, say that we have created an arboretum. For people, because more people are walking and you get a lot of walkers from. Arlen Flats and if it goes through to build the apartments on the other side of the street, you know, these are things that attract people. They do, we know. Walk their dogs through the area and use, they, they clean up after themselves, but there is like a wooded area that they sort of walk into. We got excited about that and thought we could make a trail, but Dan did point out that you have to provide cemetery. Not cemetery, handicap access and there might be more work than is necessary. So we kind of took a step back and said, well, let's start a little slower and just. Look at the trees. Daria started pruning one of the cedar trees that had a very bad limb on it. And she was going to take that away so that it gave more strength to the tree and you saw more of the tree because it was hidden. And so that's where we're at. And I did talk to Dan. He said he had a few trees that he might, we might be able to put a tree in. Daria, I didn't tell you this, in the back where there's some open space. And I don't know, what tree was it, Dan? What did you have available?
Um, actually, the tree actually that we planted at town hall, I think was a lilac tree.
Oh, a lilac tree? Okay, but you, you did, okay. So all those trees, we should try to find out the names of so that we can, you know. It would be nice to put different trees in, which enhances it as more of an arboretum to see. Like, you know, I have a ginkgo tree at my house, um. A catsura, heptakodium. Try some of these different trees. It all depends on how much room we want it to take up, whether they're decorative, ornamental trees or.
What I've done over the last couple of years is I've gone to site one at the end of the season.
Uh huh.
And I've gone in there with very little money in my pocket, but very big demands. Of the stuff that they kind of have hanging around in there.
Sure, sure.
And I'm paying, I think I, for some of these trees, I'm paying like a hundred dollars for them.
Wow, that's great.
They're, they're like, you know, listen, it's, it's the last, the last thing on the lot. It's like the ugly Christmas tree. You want to take it for whatever. And, and I take them and we, we, we put them in woodships at our yard and we then use them to, you know, fill in and replant trees. Because we really don't have a tree planting policy in town. And it was all part of, you know, our initiative to get the forestry management program up and running. We wanted to do an inventory. We wanted to create planting policies. It's just, we just didn't get the traction to do it over the last few years, but it's, it's something that we would hope to do in the future.
Well, that's what this group is doing. So Dan, that's what this new group wants to do. And Ron Pence is involved with it, who is with.
Who's good, yeah.
Cox Parks Foundation and the C E C and the Beautification Committee and they got the new environmental planner and some other people. And maybe this consort of groups coming together, we can come up with some tree policies and all the. And the information that you wanted on forestry management, I think that's, you know, important. And I see a lot of people cutting trees down these days, just. Out of fear, you know, it's fear.
Especially after you have a storm.
Yeah, yes.
I can't tell you how many dozens of phone calls I've gotten from people who want us to remove trees because they're afraid they're going to fall on their property. And I understand the concern. Um, but, you know, there's always an uptick in this and quite honestly, the whole forestry management thing came about four or five years ago. When we realized that this Emerald Ash Borer problem was going to affect our community like it's going to affect every community in the state. And we didn't know. How bad it was going to impact us because we didn't know how many ash trees we have in town. So, you know, that was our initial incentive to create a forestry management program. Um, and, you know, we're spending, and I don't have a lot of money to remove hazardous trees, but I'm spending eighty to ninety percent of it to remove dead ash trees. And it's probably not even close to what I need to remove all of them because they're all going to die.
Yeah.
So that was our, that was our initial incentive to create a forestry manager. And the other thing is Bloomfield has a tremendous amount of open space. If you look at the amount of open space in Bloomfield compared to other communities in the state and in the nation, our percentage of open space to our total land area. Is immense. It's so, it's like twenty percent. So very few towns or very few in, in the state of Connecticut have the open space that we have the benefit of having. But along with this amenity, there's a responsibility. And there's a cost.
So are there a lot of trees in these open spaces?
Oh, I'm sure there's an immense amount of trees. I mean, our real focus was on our, 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 our main, our building parcels. And our roads. I mean, just go down the street from your house, right? We talked about it today, the swamp there on Adams Road.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a whole string of dead ash trees and they're all going to come down. And it's a matter of how do we, you know, right now I've got a contractor who's going to take out. The obvious ones that if they were to fall, would fall in the road. Um, so we're focused on our building, our parcel, our main parcels and our right of ways. Which could affect pedestrian traffic, vehicular traffic and, and private property. I'm not so consumed with trying to understand how many ash trees I've got up, you know, on Wilcox Park up in the middle of the woods. I mean. They're going to, they're going to become infested. They're going to die, but, you know, they're going to fall and hopefully they're not going to, they're not going to impact anything. So. That was kind of our incentive for getting the forestry management program going. And then when we really began to realize how much open space that this town has the benefit of. It was like, you know, this, this, this really should have been done a long time ago.
Hmm, hmm. It sounds like it's something that with C E C working on it should be brought up to the council and they should give it more consideration, you know, and have some kind of. Yeah, I don't know. Is it a ten year plan? Is it a twenty year plan?
Well, we, we proposed it as a capital project probably three, four years ago and never got traction with the council. And again, there's a lot of competition for money. We know that.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's a priority for us, obviously.
Sure. Okay, well, that's good to know. Well, that sort of segues into anything else that you have to report from the DPW?
So let me try and pull up my last month's report.
I know we haven't talked to you, I don't think, since all the storm damage, did we? I'm not sure.
Um, I'm trying to think.
No, we did, I think.
Oh, we did? Okay.
So as you know, we had the storm August fourth. Um, and that we had at one point, well, at the height of the storm, well, it wasn't at the height, that storm was a pretty quick hitter. We had sixty road, sixty roads blocked by fallen trees. And none of the trees that came down, of course, were the, um. Disease trees. There were everything that were full of leaves.
Yeah.
They acted like giant sails, really.
Hmm.
Um.
Yes, she would have covered that last month, yeah.
Yeah. Let me just. Hold on, bear with me just for a second. I'm trying to pull up my, uh. So this would have been the August report. So. We're still operating without a director, without a facilities manager, without a lead building maintainer, which has really been a problem for us. It's not really a BBC item, but it is something that's. We struggle with because right now it's just me and the fleet manager who have been trying to keep the heat on, keep the department running. And keep things moving forward. So I think right now we're just trimming the tops off the pieces of grass. We're not really mowing the lawn, but we're getting there. Um. You know, staffing has been a problem for us. We're, we're, we're down two mechanics. We have one who's out on an injury. We have another one who the position is vacant. We have one who's out on an injury. We have another one who the position is vacant. So we're falling behind on fleet management. And again, I know this isn't really what you guys are concerned about, but it is, it is the, the things that we struggle with every day. We're in the middle of our renovation. I can't tell you how disruptive this has been to our operation. All winter, we, the, we had a temporary locker room and was in a construction trailer. We have volumes of our equipment that is in containers. We're coming down to the end of it. I, I just, I can't wait till this project is done. I'm, I'm just so sick of it. I just want this thing to be done so we can put our operation back together and we can, you know, begin to function on a, on a daily basis. The disruption has been unbelievable, you know? So our paving program, we've pretty much completed what we're doing this year. We didn't do enough. We never can do enough with paving. You know, pavement management is a whole nother conversation. Again, it's not a B B C issue. It's a public works issue. But it's, it's, um, something we wrapped up for the year. August fourth, we had tropical storm, um, is the A S? I, I don't even know if that's the right.
I, I.
It was a crazy storm. It's, it's one that I've never experienced because at two o'clock in the afternoon, I was contemplating if we should keep employees there. Uh, normally we get out at three thirty and I went home on Thursday. So that's how crazy that storm was. We, at the height of the storm, we had sixty roads blocked by down trees. Thirty of those streets involved electrical wires and, you know, that just goes down that whole conversation of, of ever source and their response time, and it was very painful. But we got through it. I was very proud of the, of the performance that our guys did in cleaning up the roads, getting the rooms open as soon as possible. You know, generally, we lost a lot of trees around town. One of them was right on the town green, that white oak, right across from the Prosser Library. We lost a very large limb off that tree. I had two arborists come in and look at the tree for us. It was a big hit. Where the tree is compromised, but both of them were in agreement that, you know, it's, it's a nice enough tree that we ought to give it the opportunity to heal itself. Um, and it is a nice tree, so we made the decision that we're not going to take it down. We're going to leave it there and hopefully it can, it can heal itself and, and continue to, to thrive. Because it really, before the storm, it was a very healthy tree. So we, we, um, we got involved in a mural painting at town hall. So that obviously absorbed some time, you know, the, there's always these projects that come up that we never anticipate. And, you know, they come up and it, and it takes time out of your schedule. And, you know, we try and prepare and be ready for events, but, you know, sometimes these things just come up and we don't have the opportunity to prepare for them and it just, it just takes time off. And the time clicks by and people complain, why, why aren't you paving roads? And it's just, you know, you try and explain to them, you know, these things come up and they don't always understand or, or, or agree with what you're, you're doing, you know? We had a hazmat collection last Saturday at our public works facility. That's really administered through the Metropolitan, uh, Metropolitan District Commission. It happens once a year. We do it every year. That's where we collect hazardous waste and they dispose of them. Um, this Saturday, we're having a drive-through flu clinic, which is new to us. We've never done it before, nor has the, um, West Hartford Bloomfield Health District ever done it before. So it's something new for both of us. But basically it's COVID-driven. They're going to be able to come around, drive inside our vehicle storage bay and people can receive flu shots. So that's something we're doing. And then the following Saturday, October third, I think, we're doing the shredded event at town hall with the C E C where people can bring documents to be shredded. Fall sports are basically off this year because they're not doing some sports. However, there still is basic maintenance that we are continuing to do on like the baseball field and the softball fields. Because if we don't maintain them, they'll just, they'll just all revert back to grassland and we don't want that to happen. Because when they need them, we're not going to be able to, to, um, react quick enough to get them prepped and ready for, for, um, play. Uh, we're supporting the summer concert series down on Rockwell Avenue this year, which is a new location. We chose to move it down there this year because of COVID concerns. It's a bigger area. Um, we've set up social separation circles and for the most part, I think it's been fairly successful with the amount of people that have been going down there.
Are you going to continue to have your concerts there? Is that the plan?
Yeah, we're going to finish out the year this year down on Rockwell Avenue.
Right, but for next year, are you continuing?
Um, I don't think that decision has been made yet. You know, in the past, we used to do them on town hall, but, you know, in my personal opinion, I think that Rockwell Avenue, um, lawn area and location really works pretty well. You know, I, I don't know if the increased attendance this year is due to COVID or if it's due to the location. It's really under the, the control of the Leisure Services Department. We just set them, we just support them by opening and closing the stage, cleaning the grounds, you know, and that type of thing. But I'm not so sure that, you know, that might not be a good choice in the future for maintaining concerts or maybe split duty, you know? That's pretty much what I have. It was, it was a busy month for us. You know, we track our service requests every month. We opened over two hundred and five service requests. We closed a hundred and seventy-six of them, you know? With what went down this last past month, I was, you know, pretty happy with the way it all worked out.
Good, good. Well, thank you for that report. We never realized what happened so much from the D P W and we know that you've got, but you are going through interviews, I understand. Have you had enough applicants apply for positions?
For which position we talking about?
I don't know, any positions.
So they're, they're still working on selecting a D P W director. Hopefully that will happen soon. And then I think their plan is to follow up with a, a facilities manager, a lead building maintainer and a vehicle maintenance technician. It all can't happy, happen fast enough for me. You know, we've, you know, you know, I, I know you guys all don't, and again, I don't want to cry on everybody's shoulders, realize what we do, but facilities, we're, we're in building transition, we're in, we're going from the cooling season to the heating season. So I can tell you, today is Tuesday, I've spent fifteen hours of my, the last two days on building transitions because heat's not working, rooms are too cold. There's, you know, the depth of what we do, I don't think everybody understands and I would love to broadcast it to everybody. But, um, there's just a lot going on for us and with just two of us there, it's been challenging. But, you know, that's the, that's the, that's the, um, that's the deck of cards we've been dealt and we're doing the best we can.
Okay, well, that's as good as you can do and we support that and we're appreciative of all the things you help us with. Thank you. Thank you for that report. So I'm going to move on to, um, change, this is something, the change of time. So our group has always met at seven P M. When I came into this three years ago, and the discussion has been, can we move it to an earlier time in the day? So I heard, I, I sent to all of you what worked best for you. I think a lot of people thought five thirty worked well. Does that work for everybody if we change our meetings to five thirty? Unless you want it earlier or later. I mean, I'm really opening it to the committee. How do you want to handle this? What would you like to do? I mean, right now we meet at Zoom. When we start back again, if you feel that that's not convenient, we can always talk about it. But if we're going to change it, we, we would want to notify the town so they can, you know, put it up on their, in their calendar.
I'm fine. I'm fine with the, today was good. If you want to do it at five thirty, I'm good with it.
I am too. I second that.
I'm good with five thirty, five, five thirty too.
Okay, well, let's pick a specific time. So would someone like to make a motion for a, a specific time that they want to?
I make a motion for five thirty.
Okay, I hear, I hear a second. Would someone like to, okay, Eva seconded. All in favor, say aye. Okay, anybody opposed? Any abstentions? No, the ayes have it. Okay, so we're going to meet, and Dan, we will be meeting at five thirty. And will you be now the go-to person for the Zoom meetings to be set up?
The time being, yes.
Okay, because I went all around to people trying to find this. Everybody said, no, it's not my deal.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, my only interest in the meetings is, is, you know, I start at six, six thirty in the morning. And, um, some meetings are, are, are great. The earlier the better for me. It just extends my day, but five thirty is fine for me.
Okay.
And I, you know, this group works very well with Zoom. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be upset if Zoom never went away, to tell you the truth.
Well, it certainly is easier than having to get in a car and come somewhere and stuff. But it, but you miss the feeling of being able to see each other and talk to you.
Very true. But this is a good cohesive group and we don't, you know, everybody understands, you know? Some groups don't work that well remotely.
Okay, well, then we're going to do it at five thirty. And if we decide that if it's not working out and Dan is back and says, can we do it earlier? We can see about that too. So, um, um, mums for the fall. So I'm going to be picking up mums next week. And I would like us to think about planting them next week or the week after. I do not see, I usually like to plant just before it rains so we get some water, but I don't see rain in the forecast for the next ten days, very little. And it's, it's going to be
I'm going to hear me next, next week it's going to rain, I heard.
Three days of rain.
Yeah, I heard that too.
I heard Monday.
Yeah, Monday, like Tuesday and Wednesday or something.
Sharon, I'll send you my formal weather report tomorrow.
Okay.
Um, they usually give us like a seven day look ahead. Kind of crazy year. It's been very dry.
Yeah, it has, really, really dry. And, and, you know, a lot of places where we're going to plant these mums, they're not going to be watered. So what we, what I might do is buy, when I buy the mums this next week, we'll water them in. So when we put them in, they will have been watered. So that's one good, good thing to do. All right. So, and then I, I haven't set a date yet. Are you guys all flexible enough that when I get the mums, we can sort of email back and forth and see what works for us? Seems like that might work better. And Joanne mentioned that she might be interested in planting with us. And I've had a couple of other people that we've been talking to of notable landscapes who said, oh yeah, can I help? And Eva met a young, a man who said he was interested in coming and getting involved. So I think we can get some more volunteers. It's, and Joanne, usually we get it all done within an hour or so because we lay them all out, you know, we plant them in.
Whatever you need. I'm here to help.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. So we have set the date for that over the emails. Bulbs for spring. So I, I'm going to be working, I should, I'm going to be working with Dan next week to give him the invoices for the bulbs. I basically have looked at the bulb catalogs. I'm going to get another five hundred, uh, six-week succession daffodils for the, uh, green, for in front of the town hall. Henriette and Risa helped with that last year. I'm hoping you'll help with that again. Dan dug up the area. That seemed to work really well, Dan. If Barton can do that and, you know, I, I don't know, you, you mentioned it only briefly, but by the time those things died out and no one really complained about it, we just raked them away and you really couldn't tell anything was there.
Oh, I agree. That worked out very well.
Yeah, and you will though start seeing the little grape hyacinths many times will start coming up now that the weather's getting cool. They'll only be green and very short, but often they do that. And in, in some ways that's very good because it shows us where they're planted, so we don't plant other bulbs on top of them. Um, so I'm also going to order, uh, last year we got five hundred hyacinths. So we'll continue mixing the bulbs with the hyacinths so we get that look. And then I'm ordering, uh, maybe two or three hundred alliums to put in the, next to the town perla and at Mary Hill Green, we're going to mix those in. They did very well in front of the town green, in front of the, there were some big, big ones. I think those were called, um,
Pinball Wizard.
Pinball Wizard. I was going to say wizard, yes, Pinball Wizard. And they did really well. So let's, uh, try and use those again. And last year at Mary Hill Green, we didn't have enough time, so I planted all the daffodils in pots and I wintered them over in my unheated greenhouse. And then we planted them all in the spring and they looked great. So one half of, of, uh, the garden has been planted there. So we'll either do that again or we'll need to get to Mary Hill and plant the other side under the tree.
What was the name of that daffodil that we planted at Mary Hill?
It's called, um, something gold, sun gold or no sensation, um, yellow sensation, something like that.
Yeah, that, I, I really liked that.
Yeah.
It was a really beautiful, yeah.
It was an early one and we planted in clumps. It, it, it looked very nice. So maybe that's the way to do it again is we just plant them up. I planted
It lasted a long time too.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, when I say a long time, you know what I mean.
Okay, so, so that's sort of it. Um, I'm still looking for some succession of bulbs. Now, we did plant tulips last year. I, I come from the school that usually tulips are a one-year thing. They don't come back. Sometimes they'll come back one or two. So I don't know. We planted them on either side of the entrance to town hall. And I'm kind of thinking that we ought to think of that side, both of those sides, as something a little bit more permanent. But I sort of wanted to see what you were thinking, whether we wanted it to be ornamental. I like putting the, the flowers in, but I, I don't know. It just means we have to do it every year, but maybe a perennial of some sorts with a boxwood or, there's those lilacs there. And as they grow bigger, they will fill up the space, although one seems to do better than the other. Any thoughts from the group about the front entrance?
I think, I think we should go for perennial, you know, keep it going as much as possible and just filling in with annuals.
Okay, well, so maybe we can, instead of having their, you know, there are ground covers, like, uh, there's, there's this, um, it's a Vinka Ralph sugar. It's variegated green and white and it makes a really nice ground cover and it's, looks good all year round. We might consider something like that where, and it has blue flowers. So they, it, it, you know, you would have some color and we're putting color all in the garden to the right. And the garden across from the town hall has plants in it and the liatris we planted there. I'd like to plant some more of that. I thought for the first year.
I would love to get some more liatris, yeah.
Yeah, that, that did really well. It tracks the bees. It'll even look better next year. Okay, so
Just to let everybody know, we slit seeded the whole front lawn of town hall this morning.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Yeah, we, we were watering every other day there and, you know, when we got it in the heat of August, I think it just got a little bit away from us. And we, you know, the grass really took a beating. If you look across at the town green, it, it looks awesome.
Yeah, the town green looks
It looks beautiful and I was like, holy cow. And I kept on helping the time throughout the month, but it just, it just, this year was just too brutal. It just couldn't keep up. So we slit seeded it. We're hoping for a little bit of rain. We still got the sprinkler system, of course, but, you know, that hopefully will fill right back in.
Yeah, I, yeah, go on.
I'm also going to be doing some, both, if you look at the front of town hall on the right side and the left side, there's some double doors that are entrances to the building. Um, there are patios there and there are wing walls there. They've really, you know, since I've kind of gotten into the facilities world, they've really come into disrepair. They're leaning, they're, they're, they need to be rebuilt. Um, I'm going to be promoting it as a capital project. So if, if we're thinking about doing things right at the base of the walls, adjacent to the doors where the patio entrances are, we just got to keep in, in the back of our mind that within the next twenty-four months, hopefully sooner, we're going to be doing some, probably some major reconstruction work there, which may disrupt any plannings that we do.
Okay. So is that where like the, uh, where, where the dogwoods are and all that? So, is that where, like, the, uh, very, where the dogwoods are and all that cement is coming out of the walls? Is that near the steps where you come up? Is that?
Yeah, like, you know where the honeybee nest was?
Yeah.
That per, that little patio right there, there are wing walls, like, two feet high, they're brick walls. Those are all, and there's all water getting behind the walls, it all needs to be redone. And it's the same on the right side of the building, over closer to Bloomfield Avenue.
So, do you have to take the plant material out?
Well, there's, it's kind of, right now, it's not defined exactly what we're gonna need to do, but I think those small brick walls there are gonna need to be pulled down. So, any of the plant material that's in front, when the time comes, we may want to relocate it, because it's probably gonna get damaged and trampled on. But we don't want to spend, what I'm, my point is, I don't think we want to spend a lot of money and effort doing additional plantings in that area until we kind of get to the resolution of what we're gonna do to repair these walls.
Okay.
They've been neglected for a long time. It, it needs to get done, it just needs to get done. It's not gonna get any better.
Okay, we'll, we'll make sure. You, you just keep us attuned and we'll know what to do. So, uh, in the bulbs that, I just want to finish the discussion on that. Bulb time to plant. Last year, usually we plant late October. Uh, we'll have to see how the weather is, but that's what I would figure on, and, and maybe we give Dan, uh, two or three weeks' notice, so we can make sure the beds are prepped for us, so that we can do that. And, um, yeah, uh, we'll see how it goes, because one nice thing, you don't want to start too early, but it's nice to get out and plant bulbs before your fingers freeze, and it's cold. And so, that's why it's kind of like, we gotta pay attention to the weather, and then, you know, go for those one or two days and get it done. I think Henriette and Risa, didn't we get the bulb planting done in one day?
I believe so.
We did get it done in one day.
Yeah.
Because we took, each of us took a section, and we had a lot of volunteers.
That was another day. We did the, we did the planting in front of town hall on a separate day, but you're right, we also did other plantings one day, so.
We need to get more people to help, though. That was a good job.
Yeah, okay, all right. So, we'll, I'll, we'll come up with some dates and put that to you. The same way, last year, I bought some perennials in, because the vendor I was going to had a big sale, and I bought small plants, and they came up this year, and they looked good, so I say we just continue that program again.
Just an update on the tree planting. Bart just texted me, we planted a dogwood at town hall, and a lilac at the Bloomfield Volunteer Ambulance on Twelve Southwood. That's just another one of our buildings.
Okay, so you did a dogwood?
Dogwood at town hall, yeah.
Okay. Dogwood, and, and you're talking about a lilac tree, not a lilac.
No, not a bush, a tree.
A tree, I know the lilac tree. It gets quite large, yes. Pumpkins, I haven't, I'm gonna pick up pumpkins, too, and I bought a little holder thing that you put two pumpkins in, and it has little lights that light up for cat's eyes. I thought that would be cute next to town hall, and we still have our Day of the Dead faces. You know, it was really funny, somebody came by and said, oh, what kind of things are you gonna put up on the bench this year? You know, we had those pantless people last year, so put your head, you know, your thinking hats on, it would be nice to do something fun. It makes people smile, and it, COVID is sort of has people depressed, as well as what's going on in the world. So, think about it, and maybe we can do something that's creative without being too costly. Yeah, did you have your hand up, Risa? Oh, no, okay, couldn't tell. I have a question, Dan. There's a roadie next to town hall on the right-hand side, it's looking pretty sad. Can we fertilize it? Can you fertilize it with some Holly Tone or something? Do you have any at the shop?
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, Daria, don't you think?
Where is it, on the corner of the building?
Yeah.
It's big, though, right?
Yeah.
On the, right at the doorway.
Yes.
Yeah.
The right side, right?
Yes.
Exactly, it's all yellow, yeah.
It, it could use some compost and some Holly Tone.
Yeah.
It's really not looking good at all, and I think there's irrigation, because you have drip, and I see the hoses there, I assume they work, but it just, it looked great last year, but this year, it just got real yellowy and everything. Okay, so, it, we, there's been some discussion, so, you know, we had the, no one's mentioned it, but the garden club that donated the tower, I don't know if you've noticed it, but, but Daria bought those two, three little thumberger plants, thumbergri plants, vines, and you can't even see the tower anymore. You have to cut away to see the sign that says donated by, and it really took off, and it's spreading out into the garden. And Cheryl gave me some hostas that we were planning to put in that area. So, I, I guess we'll, I was thinking about putting mums, some mums there for the fall, but we should, but we should think about that. We do have hostas to put there, which will give it a little bit more permanent look, and then we can still leave the outside green for the zinnias, which did real well there, and.
Those zinnias looked fabulous. When we planted them, I was like, ugh. Remember, we were very, um.
Yeah, they were pathetic, yeah.
I know, but every year, this is what they do, and pretty soon, you'll see monarch butterflies on everything. I mean, it's, it'll be migration time, and they just, they, they're really hardy.
They make quite a showing.
Yeah, so, you, you're to be commended, because people are noticing, and it really looks good. I'm gonna.
It was an inspiration for the artists during the BLM.
Oh, right, yeah, they said they matched the colors to.
Yeah, yeah, that, that was very nice to, to know that, and we want to keep that going. So, um, we have not really recognized the people who made those donations, and also, there's the Friends of the Library. So, maybe we should be thinking about how can we acknowledge those people? I, I think at this point, we might, I mean, we have sent thank yous, but I, I felt like the mayor and the town manager should send a written letter, as opposed to an email saying, thank you very much. I mean, I've sent them pictures and things, but it would be nice to get some acknowledgement. And I don't know, Henriette, have you received anything from the town? No, put your, put your microphone on. Henriette, you're muted. No. Henriette, unmute yourself. Either she can't see me, or. Is Henriette talking? Because no one can hear her, and she doesn't hear us. Is Henriette talking to us? I don't, Dan, can you unmute her?
Trying to, but I'm not sure how I can do it.
Henriette, can you unmute yourself? Well, somebody, you can hear the, oh, you can't unmute yourself? Okay, okay, so she can't unmute herself, so whatever she told us, we'll have to hear it through an email, okay? If you, you can hear us, right? Okay, all right, so we'll, we'll do that, then. And then, the last thing, um, uh, moving Bloomfield forward. So, when we were going around for the Notable Landscape Awards, we met Michael Riley, who owns the cows on the, on Prospect, Sixty-Nine Prospect. And he got real excited and wanted to do a project where we could put the cows on the town green. We could promote the, that Bloomfield was a dairy farm at one point, and we had all these great ideas, and he would hold the town harmless, they, he would pay for everything. And I wrote the town mayor, and I sent it to different people in the community that are on the staff, that would be involved with it. And, um, they, the mayor said no. She said they were working on a policy for the town, and not one person even called me to find out really more about the project and what was involved. So, I spoke to the owner and told him that at this point, we could not do anything, that I suggested he look elsewhere, and place it somewhere else in the community. And, but, I still believe that the beautification, it was gonna be a temporary project, I'm not giving up on it. We've got some different ideas. Hopefully, they said it would take two or three months and a committee to form, you know, to get a policy, and maybe we can come back at that time and see if they're interested. Because he was gonna put like seven cows out, and we thought it would be good, kids could take their pictures with their parents, they'd walk on the town green. I thought fall was better, because you wouldn't disturb the grass as much as you might in the spring. So, we, we'll just put that on hold, but I wanted to tell you about that concept, and, and we could talk about it more, you know, at another meeting. And, um, anything else? We didn't do the minutes yet, so I wanted to go back. Did, if everybody had a chance to read the minutes, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes, I, I move to approve the minutes.
Okay, so Daria moves to approve the minutes. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, so Risa seconds it. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? No, okay. Any abstentions? No, then it carries, the minutes are approved for August. So, is there anything else? Joanne, you've been here very quietly, sitting here all this time. Would you like to tell the group a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the group, the BBC?
Well, I'm interested in, um, helping to beautify Bloomfield. I'm not a master gardener or anything. I, I, this year, started gardening in my backyard, and have come to love planting and caring for plants. And, um, I just want to be part of a, a group that is going to make our town better.
Oh, thank you. Great, welcome.
Great, welcome.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
Yes, okay, I really appreciate it. Do you have any questions or anything? Was there anything that you wanted to know?
Not at this time, just, you know, basically, you know, let me know when you need me.
Okay, sounds good. We'll be calling. I think next month, our meeting is going to be on October twenty-seventh, and we'll, it's, we'll be, you see, seven-thirty, but it's gonna change to five-thirty. And is there anything, with, nothing else, right? No old business, anything else? So.
That corner on, uh.
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry. We do have one more thing. The corner of Loffler Road, it's not looking great. Eva went there today, I'd like her to give a report to the group. I want Dan to hear this, and we need to make a decision on what we should do. Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna see, it says, I have an option here to share the screen, so I'm gonna try it, because I have pictures. Can anybody see, do you guys see this?
Yeah, you just got, yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is a picture of the island, um, from, uh, from the direction coming from Dunkster. So, you first have all these, just a big thing of barberry. And then, kind of going in, you have, um, daylilies that have obviously gone by, and then I, what looks pretty good, which we'll get to it later, is the Russian sage. Um, and, but there's a lot, I think those are, those yellowy, tall, are those weeds of some kind?
No, it's milkweed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's milkweed.
Yeah, so, that's okay, it's there, it's just kind of scraggly, but.
Yeah. And then, as you kind of go towards Mountain Avenue, you can see some, some grasses and some sedum, which the sedum is doing well. And then, um, as you get to the end, I don't know what this ground cover-y shrubby thing is, but you can see half of it is all brown.
It's like a juniper. Yeah, it's juniper.
And then, so, yeah, so these are, so you're saying that this is the milkweed, then? Okay, and this is kind of coming back, um, the, coming from Mountain Avenue towards the Dunkster. The yucca looks nice, and I'm not sure what the shrub to the right of it is, but it looks like it's had a good color now, it's kind of.
It's a spyrea.
Okay, and then, the last picture is, okay, so this is just, you can just see the barberry in the back, and just the, um, daylilies and the milkweed. So, it, obviously, that area gets sun from all directions all day long, so it's obviously a very hot spot. It, it's difficult to get there to water it. So, you know, I would think that it would do best by trying to maybe keep it very sculptural, with some grasses, some sedum, and not really focus it on flowers, and just kind of have different colors of green, kind of silvery tones or something. As I said, it's just, it's just difficult to get there, it's a big island, to water that, um, and it's just in full sun all day long.
Well, does it look like it's being maintained?
Um, no, because none of the, um, none of the, like, the spent daylily stems are gone. There's just a lot of dry leaves, and there's a lot of debris in it. No, it doesn't look like there's been any maintenance.
So, I, Gwen, do you have a question? Because I'll tell you about the maintenance of this.
What happened to Dunkster and Kevin Wilcox?
Okay, so, I talked, I didn't talk to him now, but Kevin Wilcox, who works at Dunkster, set up a meeting with the people there, and they agreed, uh, sent me a letter that they would maintain it. But I, I don't think, you, you know, their idea of maintenance is, we'll go in the spring, we'll come once in the summer, and we'll come once in the fall. I think that's what their idea of maintenance is. And it, it's, it's just such a focal point, because you write, you see this as you come into town. And I'm wondering, I would like to call Kevin first and see where he's coming from with this. I don't mind the milkweed, but I think it's just all over the place, there's no, you, you, you know, they need to edit it somewhat.
Yeah, and it's growing, it's growing beyond, like, you can see the, like, the rail, like, that, that wood tie type of thing.
Yeah.
On the other side, which is almost through the road, so it's just very haphazard throughout.
Well, for years, when we took care of it, first of all, couldn't get the water, of cour, you know, you can't water it, and we would go in April and weed, and once a month, our garden club would do it, but then everyone got, you know, they got elderly. It's very, the traffic, cars going by, it was really, really hard for us sometimes. It was kind of dangerous trying to weed that place, that whole thing, and that's why we kind of turned it back over to Dunkster, because we maintained it for about, what, fifteen years, I think?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I tried to get the high school kids to do it, but they had so many requirements that we had to monitor the kids, we had to pick them up, and these kids don't have any experience, so, you know, I didn't want to be responsible for them. And so, it's sort of like, I don't know, Dan, do you have any feelings about this area? I, I would like to go back to the Dunkster first, but what about?
Well, you know, I've always been a fan of Adopt a Spot, and I thought the Dunkster, if they were willing to do it, it was a perfect match.
Right, right.
Prominent intersection in town. You know, it, it needs to be maintained. I would, I would recommend reaching out for the Dunkster again, maybe trying to.
Yeah, I will.
Just put it back on their radar, and they've got their own, like, uh, personal gardens right up the street.
Right, yeah.
Well, they were going to hire a landscaping company, so Kevin wasn't going to maintain this. I don't remember the name of the company, but it's someone who, who Kevin works with. And, um, but they were very excited about doing it, so I think I will reach out to them and saying, you know, can we meet there? And really just sort of put it in their face, you know, like, look at this, is this what you want to reflect as an entry into Dunkster?
Because they had done some, when, after we turned it over, they had done it, because it cost us a lot for mulch, when we used to mulch it and everything else, because the town used to give us mulch, but I think the mulch had a lot of weeds. So, then we started getting mulch from Wade's, and then Dunkster, when they took it up, was it last year, Sharon, I think?
Yeah, yeah.
Last year, they started, I mean, it started looking good, and all of a sudden, it's been neglected.
Yeah, I, I don't think they've done anything this year. I mean, maybe they cut their expenses and felt like with COVID, we're gonna spend money on this.
And most of the daylilies were, um, from Cheryl. And the yucca, I know, was from Diana Barnet's, and a few of the, of the sage, I know, was, you know, we paid a lot. Some, some of it was, um, the garden club's money, but.
Well, I think it has potential.
It does.
Either you gotta make it very sculptural, as someone mentioned, or you gotta heavily plant it with shrubs that don't allow for much space in between, you know, like swaths of grasses, swaths of the plants, yuccas and stuff, things that do well there.
Because you can't do, there's certain things you can't plant, because. Because you can't do, there's certain things you can't plant because of the height restriction, right?
I think so.
Um, yeah, you can plant things. I don't think there's, you know, you just, you don't wanna plant a tree under the wires, but that was kind of coming into my mind. What about a tree in that island?
But I'm gonna tell them. Yeah. Guys, excuse me, I have to go.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, bye.
I don't know about, I thought someone said because it's on a corner, you can't, because of traffic and everything else, you can't block. I don't, I thought that's what I heard when we were maintaining it.
Well, you don't wanna block sightlines. It's it's a vital intersection, but if you were to come back off the, um, Loffler Road intersection a little bit, I think you could plant a tree in there if you thought it would fit.
Yeah, if you put it where the barberry is, like, back and not right by the road.
Yep.
That barberry's a pain.
Yeah, I was, I mean, barberries are invasive.
Yeah.
There's only one member in our garden club. We were trying to get rid of it for years and she just fought us on it.
Really?
Well, I mean, they are there. They're pretty substantial. I'd be more concerned about the dead, um, arborivies that are up near the road. You know, that just looks terrible.
And that we used to trim and everything else, but it's gotten out of hand. And we used to have, um, chives up at the top, too. I don't know whatever happened with that.
And I know that the, um, I was told that when they snowplow, a lot of snow gets dumped right at the beginning of the bed. Is that true, Dan? Because maybe that's why they, you know.
That is true.
Yeah.
And you wouldn't wanna see the junk that people throw in there that we used to have to clean up. The litter, it was.
Really, litter?
Uh huh, litter, a lot of littering.
Well, something for us to consider. Maybe we can talk about it through the winter. Let me go call Dunkaster and see what they think, okay?
That works.
All right, well, I'm not gonna keep you any longer. It's, um, 6:58. We stayed right within our timeframe that Dan set up, five to seven. And, uh, I will be in touch with you about the bulbs and the mums. And thank you, Joanne, for coming today. Thank you.
Thank you for asking.
Thank you, Dan, and, uh, you know, have fun. I sent you guys an article about gardening, so you know what to do about plants. So we'll all be bringing plants in, but expect some nice warm weather coming up for the next week or so. All right, so that's it. Yes, did you, did we, did we pass, we, we, okay, to end the meeting, right?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, all right, so, uh, over and out. And thank you, everybody, for taking care of the spaces that you do in the town. They're looking great. And they're gonna be, this is the, I think, the most beautiful time of the season, what everything looks like, so.
All right, everybody, we'll all see you next month.
Forever Duchy. Okay.
I know.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye, Joanne.